Called to order this special meeting of the city of Campbell, City Council for Tuesday, February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Government Code fifty-four nine fifty-three states that all meetings of the legislative body of a local agency shall be open to the public and all persons shall be permitted to attend any meeting of the legislative body of a local agency except as otherwise provided. Members of the legislative body are allowed to participate remotely pursuant to government code fifty-four nine five-three, section F-two, for emergency circumstances. Upon their providing a general description of the circumstances relating to their need to appear remotely at the given meeting, Mayor Lopez is hereby requesting to participate in this meeting remotely, as well as in the council meeting which follows the study session portion of the meeting, as a result of caregiver need of a family member. Now would be the appropriate time for a member of the council to make a motion to approve at a second, to approve Mayor Lopez's request to participate in the study session now as a matter of fact, well as the very, the government council.
I'm sorry, I think the council chamber, the main speaker just muted themselves. I'm so unable to hear in the audio.
My speaker is on.
I think this one.
I can hear now.
I'd like to ask the clerk to call, roll on this motion.
Councilmember Bybee.
Aye.
Councilmember Heinz.
Aye.
Councilmember Schizola.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fertado.
Aye.
Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
Mayor Lopez shall publicly disclose at this meeting before any action is taken, whether any individual eighteen years of older or older is present in the room with you and the general nature of your relationship to any such individual. Sergio, please disclose whether any other individual eighteen years of older is present in the room with you and if so, their relationship to you.
Thank you, there's no one in there with me at this time.
Okay, thank you. We will now call roll for the study session and subsequent regular council session immediately following. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bybee.
Present.
Councilmember Heinz.
Present.
Councilmember Schizola.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fertado.
Aye.
Mayor Lopez.
Here.
Thank you. We now move to public comment. Is there anyone in the council chamber or anyone online who wishes to provide comments to the city council? Anyone online? There are no public comments. We now move to new business, the study session where we will discuss the pavement maintenance program. The recommended action is that the city council receive a status report on the pavement maintenance program and preview the impacts of various funding strategies on the future condition of the roadwork that is, its current condition. So I know this used to be called the Pavement Management Index by the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, so whether there, that is still appropriate, I'm not sure, but in any event, it is an objective way of looking at our road maintenance and coming to decisions as to priorities of paving and so on. So I'd like to call on our city engineer, Amy Olay, to conduct this meeting.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. Thank you for this opportunity for us to talk to you and share with you an update of the pavement maintenance program. Before I start, I do want to acknowledge some team members that are here that focuses on the, this particular program. We have our program manager, our senior civil engineer Fred Hall, and then we have our project engineer, Ray Antonio, our assistance engineer. So thank you for being here. Okay, I think the first thing that we. Okay, there you go. The first thing I wanted to talk about is the Bay Area Metropolitan Transportation Commission, MTC's role in regards to pavement maintenance in the San Francisco Bay Area region. They play a vital role because they provide us with training, technical assistance, kind of like the Pavement Management Technical Assistance Program, also known as PTAP, and financial assistance, very important. We get by annual PTAP funds from MTC that allows us to gather field conditions of our streets that then get rated, and like what the vice mayor mentioned, on the conditions of the streets in our city network. And the Street Saber software is one that. Sure, but, sorry, I don't know where that came from. The Street Saber software is a software developed by MTC to help cities to strategize, well, first of all, to look at the conditions of the streets that are surveyed, but also to strategize to come up with the best scenario or the best use of our limited pavement money. And this Street Saber has the, is the basis of looking at streets that are more in the fair condition, which I'm going to go through in a bit, and what that means. It's because we don't want streets to deteriorate to a fail condition, where then it's just a lot more money for us to address those, those streets. And so, the condition of streets that's rated using a system, it's called pavement condition index, so it's PCI. I don't know how to remove this, so can we just? Okay, so the pavement condition index, it's rated by, you know, from excellent, good, fair, poor, and failed. And if we look at this, excellent is a rating of one hundred, that's almost equivalent to a brand-new street, where a fail condition like zero thirty, that's a street that's just deteriorated, and it would cost so much for us to rehabilitate or basically reconstruct that entire street. And in, in twenty twenty-four through the PTAP report that was published in twenty twenty-four, the pavement condition data for the city network is PCI of sixty-six. So if we look in the condition, sixty-six means that our streets are in a fairer condition. Now, please note though, that the general plan twenty forty, one of the goals for the pavement condition is to achieve a PCI of seventy. So seventy, we're looking at the higher end of the fairer condition. So although from a numerical standpoint, seventy and sixty-six seems like it's only four points away, but it's much harder to achieve when it comes to pavement, and I'll go through that a little bit more later. Okay, so let's look at what is comprised, what makes up our street network. We have bunch, three different functional classifications. We have the arterial street systems, these are more the major thoroughfares that carry a lot more traffic, so heavy loads, and that's about fifteen percent of our network. Sartorials are, are the Winchester's, Hamilton, Bascom, Pollard, Camden, Lee, Campbell Avenue, Civic Center Drive, and Orchard City Drive. And the other two parts of the network, it's the collectors, makes up about twenty percent of our network, and local residential takes up the majority of the pie, which is about sixty-six percent. Local residential and collector's streets are where our residents reside. So looking at what the PCI for local residential and collectors are sixty-six, and arterials are a little bit lower, sixty-four, but if we look at what the network average, we're looking at sixty-six, and you can't just do that straight math to come up with the average because it really varies by the square footage that are included within each functional classification. Okay, I want to show this map because this is our city network, and the colors depict the pavement condition index. And you see a lot of yellows here, but let me just go through with the legend, the green and the blue are the conditions that are excellent and good. So we have a lot of blue, so that's a good sign, but we do have a lot of yellows with our, which is in the fair category. We do have some poor and failed, the more mustard and the red, very few of those, which is also a good thing for our network. So if we look at this, thirty-eight percent of the city's pavement, you know, with the green and the blue are in the excellent, good condition, in fair condition, we're looking at about forty-four percent, and the remaining that are poor, fail, we're looking at eighteen percent. So what tells us is that preventative maintenance is key to our program. So I'm going to run through just a few preventative maintenance treatments, I'm not going to run through them all, but the crack sealing is really our first line of defense in preventing water from getting into and down into the pavement surface, because pavement is the number-one enemy to our pavement. So we want to defend against that, we want to prevent that from happening, and crack sealing, these are low-cost measures that have great benefits. How we approach crack seal in our program is from two different, actually taking two different programs, the capital program as well as the operation program. And through the capital program, we allocate about fifty thousand dollars a year from our annual street maintenance budget, looking at probably increasing that just because we're seeing the benefits, and through the operating budget, about ten to fifteen thousand dollars a year is spent on crack seal. And the reason why a few years ago, we decided to team up and partner is that this way we'd get more streets crack sealed. We, from the, from the capital side, we get a list of streets from Street Saber that tells us, okay, these streets are in good condition, it would benefit from crack seal, and then at the same time, from our street maintenance crews, they know, they drive the streets, and they know certain streets that would value from having crack seal, so we've worked together to come up with that list. The next line of defense is to slurry our streets, and slurring our streets is one that would, would target PCI, streets that have PCI range of seventy to eighty-nine, and in doing so, we get about five to seven years life from this type of treatment. The next one is more for streets that are in the range of fifty to sixty-nine, so more from fair to poor, so more additional treatment, more intense treatment that is necessary, and that would be through a seal, a cape seal. In the recent years, we've been incorporating rubber in the cape seal, and the reason is because it's good for the environment, we're reusing tires, and we have been able to get some grant from CalRecycle because we are adding rubber to the mix. The next thing is, the next type of treatment is for, for more extensive streets that are in the more poor condition, and this is where we can increase the structural strength of the pavement, and this is where we incorporate asphalt overlay. So of all the different treatments that I've shown, they increase in cost, so this is the most costly of all. And typically, you see a lot of this, you know, like in our arterial projects, but we also use this for our, our collectors of residential too, just depending on their condition that they're at. So the next couple few slides, I do want to illustrate some example projects where we have provided pavement maintenance and what's, what we did with them. So I want to talk about Winchester Boulevard, this is a project that we completed in twenty twenty, and Winchester Boulevard, we're looking at two and a half miles from northern city limit to southern city limits, and the PCI of this street was forty. And it cost over six million dollars to complete this project, which means that we had to pull multiple years of funding from our annual street maintenance to make this happen. And that has been our approach, like with arterial projects, that we pull multiple years of funding, similar to our upcoming Hamilton Street resurfacing, where we're addressing like over two-point-eight miles of, of street, but not from a single year of funding. And so with the Winchester Boulevard, what's interesting is that it, on the northern end, we're talking about city of San Jose, on the southern end, we have Pascados, and then somewhere in the middle, we also have the county that we're working with. And so, and so, how we do projects where it crosses or affects neighboring jurisdictions is that we coordinate with them, and we, we ask whether they are interested in participating, you know, Campbell in this case would be the lead, and what they want to cost share, because what we want to do is we want to provide the benefit to the general community, you know, Campbell, but also our neighboring communities, in creating a project that is very homogeneous and that, you know, when you go drive from one city to the next, you don't see a huge gap, and as well as the striping, so that things flow well. Okay, so the next two projects is very interesting in that they don't really fall under our typical annual street maintenance. So Audrey and Hack is one that I want to touch on first, and the next one will be Camden, but Audrey and Hack is one that we had completed in twenty eighteen. It's a couple of streets that have been in our backlog for a while. And for years, our goal was to find enough money and address and treat these streets, and ultimately, because through savings, through other projects, other annual street maintenance projects, that we were able to then put something together and address this one. This one, very complicated, because as you can see from the picture, it does not, the streets don't have sidewalks, so we're talking about no shoulders. So that's another complication that we dealt with on this project, but the end product looks great, the, then the residents love it, they even threw a pizza party during the construction, that's how happy, you know, people are when there's, get the pavement treatment that is necessary. The next project is a recently completed, a completed project on, on Camden Avenue, this is what some would refer to as Old Camden, right? This is a light industrial area, didn't get much attention, the only attention we would give is when we get calls that potholes that need to be filled. So ultimately, we were able to, actually, I think it's through the savings from the Winchester project, and also some vehicle impact fees, from that pulling the funds together, we were able to get this project designed and completed, and really, if you look at the before and after pictures, it's night and day.
Yeah, first of all, I wanted to tell you, I've, I've heard many very positive comments about the paving of Old Camden Avenue, so that's great, people who live at Timber Cove, but then also along the industrial core as well, you know. But just a brief question while you were still on that, I just wondered, of the pavement treatment of the ones you described, I assume that was a more extensive.
Oh, more, much more.
Yes, okay.
Much more extensive, and we also had to.
Sorry.
We also had to address some of the drainage issues as well. Okay, so now we're talking about funding strategies, so the next few slides, I'm going to be talking about fundings, funding and various strategies, and how they impact the pavement condition as well as deferred maintenance. But let me start with giving you a highlight, which, you know, this information is included in the report that was provided to you, but let's talk about what the current situation of the funding, what the, what the, what the spending sources look like. I highlighted the first two kind of different colors to show how we have two different pots of local funds that support this program. We have the Capital Improvement Program, BISIR, CIPR, annually at two-hundred thousand dollars a year, and then also, we have vehicle impact fees that are collected from building construction and from solid waste, heavy waste vehicles. And for building vehicle impact fees, we collect, well, the, the source allows us to have three-hundred thousand dollars a year, and then from solid waste is four-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand dollars a year. The next set of funding sources are more grants related, we have our vehicle registration fee, that's more of a county vehicle registration fee that gets collected, county-based, that's two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand a year that we get, and Measure B is a gas tax through VTA, we get seven ninety-seven, and then the, the state gas tax for, also known as SB one, and here we project one-point-one. So the measure B and the gas tax dollars, they get adjusted annually, and what we do is we just put a projection, but then we, we compare that to the actuals, with the actual amounts that, that we receive. And so looking at all of that, the annual funding is three-point-one million dollars for our street maintenance program. So let's walk through some, what happens with different funding levels, and what does that do to the PCI, and then on the vertical column on the left side, we're talking about deferred maintenance. So the bar charts that you see represent the deferred maintenance levels. So if we look at our, our three-point-one million funding, our current funding, which is starting in twenty twenty-five, the deferred maintenance is fifty-eight mil, fifty-eight million, and it goes to one-hundred-and-thirty-four million in year twenty thirty. So, you know, like deferred maintenance for city buildings and facilities, streets also carry a heavy deferred maintenance, this is when funding levels doesn't match up with the maintenance needs, so therefore, a backlog or deferred maintenance is created. So the challenge is to create a balanced pavement maintenance program that manages the overall acceptable level service while also considering what the deferred maintenance is. Okay, so the next scenario that I do want to show you is what happens if we are trying to achieve the general plan seventy PCI? That would require us to quadruple our annual funding to twelve million dollars a year, right? Because currently, we're at three-point-one, so this would be twelve million. So if you look at this, the deferred maintenance bars there, it, they're lower because we're investing more annually. So we're looking at in twenty twenty-five, fifty million, it continues to grow up, I mean, to, to, to grow, and then it's seventy-eight million and twenty-third. And it's also good for us to show you what it means, what happens if we want to maintain a PCI of sixty-eight, and the reason we're for PCI sixty-eight is because that's the projected PCI after we complete the Hamilton resurfacing project. So if we want to maintain that, it will take ten million dollars per year to do that. And the last scenario that, that we came up with is kind of a, it's more of a midpoint, right? And it's not based on a particular PCI or, or, or anything like that, we just wanted to see what would it be if it's three, not three, not ten, what could it be? So we picked six, and you see how the PCI still continues to drop because it's not at any particular goal PCI that we're trying to get to. So this is more of a, maybe a stopgap measure until we can build up to get more funds in the future. So this is a viable solution, right? So we'll see PCI is just dropping one point at a time, but this is in the hopes that we will be able to get more funding and then put it into the program. This is just another way to show you the spending level versus the PCI, so the blue line is the three million dollar, and how the PCI just drops from sixty-eight to sixty by twenty thirty, and the, and the red is the six million, and the ten, you know, that's the one that's maintaining, the green that's maintaining the PCI of sixty-eight, and then the purple is the twelve million, which is trying to achieve PCI of seventy. And this one here is just trying to summarize everything, where we're summarizing with the PCI, what the deferred maintenance, and the different funding levels. So notice that with the blue, the three million, it just continues to, to escalate and increase. And then the numbers that are on the top of the bar charts, those represent the PCIs. So when we're working on pavement projects, it's not just about funding the immediate, like pavement needs, right? We're looking at also the increases in federal and regional regulations with which pavement project, projects are subject to, and this is also increasing the cost of our, of our pavement projects. Three that I do want to talk about, the impacts, is the, having the need to include compliant curb ramps, ADA-compliant curb ramps in our pavement projects. This usually could take up about This usually could take up about 30% of the project budget. Um, and then the green street infrastructure, a few weeks ago, you heard about the MRP 3.0. And how it impacts our future projects. And pavement project is also one that could be subject to if we disturb. One acre of contiguous impervious areas. So that's where we have to strategize on our design. But that could add, maybe we're estimating at least like 20% to the budget. And then complete streets element is one where with measure B funding. Is one when we're addressing pavement projects, is for us to look at opportunities to incorporate complete streets elements. You know, such as what you see here, green bike lanes is a complete streets. Or if, if there's space, maybe bulk out and things like that. I can't, uh, we can't ignore some of the other elements, though they're not really regulations. But when we're addressing pavement projects, um, we do need to look at like the sidewalk, if there are any uplifts. And this is where we also partner with our, our, our maintenance, street maintenance. Program to see where we can both work together on this. But if there are any sidewalk uplifts, we want to minimize stripping hazards. And then oftentimes, because, you know, trees are great. But trees also could create havoc on our streets. Not just on our sidewalks, but also on our curb and pavement itself. So in that lower left picture, you can see where the flow line is gone. And then so as part of the pavement project, we need to reestablish that flow line. And then the picture on the right, the Burger King location is actually part of the Winchester project. Where at that corner, we needed to, um, include ADA compliant ramps. Because there are none right there. And in doing so, there's a signal pole in the middle of it all. So what that means, we have to relocate that pole. That means more costs because then there's electrical costs involved. Okay, so in summary, just wanted to close by, um, our current network average PCI is 66. And we're projecting it to be 68 after the completion of the Hamilton project. At current 3.1 million annual funding, the PCI will continue to drop with 60. PCI 68 will need 10 million annually. And with, um, to meet the 70 per general plan goal, we would be 12 million dollars annually. So no additional funds. That means that will increase the backlog of streets, leading to more costly repairs and increased deferred maintenance. And we're seeing escalating construction costs and with more regulations. That means that our pavement project costs will just continue to go up. Okay, so for this evening. There are some questions or topics for discussion that, um. That we would like to have with council to give us also a, a sense and direction. As we go into this upcoming budget process on how we would want to proceed. And so if we're looking at pavement condition, what is the acceptable condition to achieve? For the overall city roadway network? Should the decision making process prioritize streets by functional classifications? Like by the archerials or residential collectors or by the PCI? And then in regards to funding, in the event additional funding becomes available. Should they be allocated to address deferred pavement maintenance needs? And then in compliance with regulations associated pavement maintenance projects. Should there be separate funding to address improvements related to green streets and complete streets? Or increase the annual accessibility ramp budget, which currently is funded at $50,000 per year? To reduce the backlog of noncompliant ADA curb ramps. And just kind of, um, information there is that the ramp costs are going up. It seems like every time we put out a project, the cost of, of, of implementing a ramp keeps on going up. So we're almost looking at them being close to $10,000 a round. And our backlog is over 800 ramps that we show that needs to be addressed. Okay, and then C is. I talked a little bit about the vehicle impact fee. So they were created sometime in 2009 timeframe, but they haven't been updated. So confirm if council supports staff to conduct a study to update the vehicle impact fees, possibly looking at that. And so with that, open for questions, discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was a very thorough report, very, very helpful. Thanks. Somewhat depressing occasionally. But I'm glad you, uh, you know, you filled this in exactly what the issue is. First of all, ask members of the council if there are any questions that you might have. Before we kind of move into the discussion part, just any questions on part of the council?
Yeah, I, I have a question, um, and it's about the, um, the annual budget for this, for the pavement management. Program. At one point, um, there was city policy that we would be targeting five, 5 million dollars. Annually towards pavement management. To address just what concerns are to keep our streets in a fair, fair condition. And it, from what I'm hearing, it's now been reduced to 3.1 million. And I, I'd kind of like to understand why, um, the policy, why we're, we're, we're 2 million dollars less. And what, what our policy was, and I understand part of it had to do with COVID. But it, it seems that we should be following, um, what our policy states.
Thank you, council member Bobby. I'll, I'll try and see if I can address a question you asked that question earlier. Spoke with our finance director, who's not here this evening. And you are correct, the last time that we really were hitting that target of 5 million dollars is pre-COVID. Uh, and I think the reality is that that money is general fund money and it's being spread in many different ways. And we haven't gotten back to that. I think we, we had a conversation of what our reserve level should be, not just CIPR, but other reserves. And that's probably an area that we should look at and see where that appropriate level is and get back to that. That is just your, really your general fund money going into this and we've, we've just spread ourselves too thin with that.
But I, I, I guess I'm trying to understand in the CIP process, if, if, if 5 million dollars is a priority for street pavement. Why other projects, um. Are, are given, uh, greater consideration than, than what the council policy is. I, that, that it's, I don't understand that. I, I know that it's a limited pot of money and there's several projects that are introduced or whatever. But it should be that when there, when staff is considering projects, that, that 5 million dollar target should be. For street, street ma, street maintenance. And, you know, you, in the report, you said that we need to double the budget from 3.1 to 6 million. But the, the, unless there's a revenue stream to support that, that's not, that's likelihood of that happening isn't going to happen. And it really should be from 5 million to 10 million. Because that, that is, that is our, was our target. So just, that's just my question.
Well, I, I, I don't know if there's a good answer to that other, it is a target. And obviously we don't always hit our targets and it's obvious we didn't hit that target. Uh, and that's really a, a discussion for the parties when we bring the budget back. And we'll obviously be taking a closer look at that this year. And that was the reason why we wanted to have the study session tonight on this. Is get that teed up before we start thinking everything else in budget. And we also wanted to tee this up tonight because we've talked about deferred maintenance of our other capital assets, but not really about roads. Which, as you can see, is equal to, if not far exceeding other capital assets as far as deferred maintenance. So, um, I, I think we have our work cut out for us. And it's like everything else in our budget, we want to do too much with, with too little. And although we were successful in measure K and we may be getting additional revenues in the future from that. That itself's not going to solve this problem. One of the suggestions staff is asking for some feedback on is whether or not we should be exploring other revenue sources. Like, uh, the impact fees, um, that, uh, that staff is suggesting, perhaps we go back and look at that. Try to create some additional revenues perhaps as well.
And is there any preliminary estimate of what that would generate? I mean, in dollars, would that be a million, would that be 500,000?
I can't give you that answer until we do some more research. So reached out to some of our neighboring cities and it doesn't seem like they collect much. So I would suggest that maybe at the next, um, master fee updates, the study that we include that in there. Because we haven't changed those numbers. And maybe we do need to, to make, bring them up to the current economic times. So I think that would be valuable to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent presentation, Amy. Thank you very much. Just a, a couple of questions. You're talking about multi-year funding. When you talk about multi-year, are you doing it like in a future, uh, pulling money from a future budget? Or is it, um, you waited three years and are doing the project?
So when I say multi-year, what it means is that, um, for instance, the Hamilton project. We started off thinking that we would need three years funding, but it's turning out that it's costing more, so we're waiting four years. What we do is that from the beginning, from year one, right, we start like preliminary design. So we continue to design that project. And then we know that we need to wait in order to award that project fourth year. Because then we have the money available. So we don't borrow from future, we wait till that funding is available.
Very good, thank you. And then, yeah, you talked about putting rubber into the, you know, the recycling rubber. Is there a conservation issue associated with, uh, putting rubber on the streets which ends up being. Out into storm drains and the like, uh, any, what's the conservation aspect?
Yeah, there actually isn't a concern on that. It's actually very good in reusing something that it would otherwise go to the landfill.
So it's, okay.
Yeah, they mix that into the materials, become very common. And that's why we get recognized by Cal Recycle by them giving us a little bit of money to support that, that type of treatment.
Very good. And then, uh, last question, the electrical vehicle. There's, there's several discussions, particularly around impact fees, I guess, with the electric vehicles. Any, um, ideas that you have as far as, uh, whether there's more or less associated with, uh, electric vehicles?
Well, the vehicle impact fees that we would focus on here are the more, um, like the trucks, like the building construction. And the solid waste. Because we know that they are, they carry a lot of load and they're heavy. And heavy loads, right, on our streets, that's where our streets start deteriorating. So really to recuperate from those damages, we're really targeting the, you know, like the construction vehicles. Like the solid waste, because we know that happens on the routes.
Makes sense, and I appreciate that. Maybe asking the question a little differently on it. It would be more to increase the gas tax because the EV is not using a, a gas tax. So is there any consideration along that sort of line?
Also, maybe are you referring to the measure B and the gas tax, right? That's what we thought too initially, that because more cars are EV, that maybe that, that. The revenue that we get would go down, but that hasn't really been shown to be the trend. We have been seeing actually the tax going up and that could be related to the cost of gas.
Yeah. Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for the presentation. Uh, I did have a couple of questions. One of which is also regarding the, the, this new kind of rubber implementation, the resurfacing. Incorporating the rubber into the roadways. So one question I had regarding that is how often are we able to take advantage of this when it comes to the grant funding? And when we do, how much cost savings, maybe percentage wise, would we get on average when we do receive that grant, grant funding? For that particular kind of project?
Um, we could, if we have a program, right, that particular year, we can look for. And they do happen. They, you know, almost like, um, it could be almost annually, right? But the amount that we get is very minimal. And I think for the, um, past few projects that we've done, maybe a total, you're looking at a total 150,000.
Okay, thank you. All right, and, uh, I think council member brought up a, a good point, or council member Heinz, I should say, brought up a good point. With the question regarding environmental standards with these roadways incorporating the rubber into them. When it comes to, especially when the storms come through and going into our storm drains. And is there any knowledge at this point? How, how, or how long has this been happening with the, the surface? Is there, uh, resurfacing with the rubber? And have we, uh, any information on, when it comes to environmentally with washing of the storm drains? Is there now like particulates, rubber particulates that are getting into the water? Do we have any information about that?
I don't have that information and through industry, we haven't heard that that's a major impact to our storm drain.
Okay.
And council member, I'm on the storm drain as an alternate, I'll ask that question.
Oh, great.
In the, uh, in the storm drain.
That would be some useful information, appreciate it. And, uh, okay, a, a different question I had on a different subject is, um, when it comes to, we have, you know, we see it in every community. The pavement lifting from trees that are a little too close to sidewalk, that enough age goes by, the roots get big enough that they start. Pressing the sidewalks up. So I'm wondering if we have any kind of policy at the moment for emphasizing planting trees near sidewalks that have. The more deep root systems or their, their roots are just not nearly as problematic for, for sidewalks. Do we have anything like that at the moment?
I'm not sure, I may be wrong to talk about how our tree policy. But with our pavement projects, when we do have any uplifted pavement or sidewalk. We definitely engage our city arborist to, um, well, we cut down the existing tree if it's feasible. And we will replace it with something that is better. So that doesn't cause a kind of havoc.
Also, on the same subject, is there, do we do anything when it comes to root barriers? Like there are all different methods of placing a root barrier in certain areas. So that the roots are guided more downwards instead of coming up to the surface and affecting, you know, pavement and sidewalks and whatnot.
To my knowledge, for our city, right away, we have not installed any big barriers.
Yeah, and I guess that, I guess I have a general comment that I'll, I should say that for now.
Just for a moment, I suppose.
Okay, thank you.
So do you have any questions to ask at this point?
No, thank you, just comments for later.
Thank you. I did have one question. If we did conduct the study that you had suggested, uh, do you have any idea of the general price range of something like that?
Roughly maybe 50, I'm just throwing out a number. I don't, you know, we need to see what the consultants, but hopefully it shouldn't cost more than that. And, and especially if we're able to, um, I mean, I'm probably overstepping here. But if we can include it as part of the master fee schedule, uh, you know, that study.
You think it would be a worthwhile study to produce information that would help guide you in this process? Thank you. Kind of getting away from us here, so we'll move now to, uh, see if, uh, members of the council want to suggest anything. Based on the key questions that have been asked in terms of our future strategy. And how we might plan for the future to address this need. Elliot, I'll call on you first. No, I didn't, but it, is there any member of the public, um, either present or online that wishes to discuss this matter? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I, I just, yeah, it's definitely pretty shocking and concerning to see that. I mean, I know the cost of living is going up for everyone, but the, the maintenance and construction costs, like. Am I understanding correctly, did I see that number at 12 million per year for it to be like at an excellent level? Wow, that is incredible. Yeah, I mean, that just seems like unsustainable at this point, especially for, you know, mid-sized cities such as us. Obviously, we want to keep our roads as amazing as possible. But, but I can't see any way that we can get up to that level. So, um, I'd be very curious. So I'd be very curious just to ultimately see, you know, going on what council member Bobby was talking about and where that maybe perhaps fine line is that we get to at least maintain that good level. What were the numbers? I'm sorry, I'm asking a question. Can you remind me the number again of the sixty eight? Okay, all right. Thank you so much.
Comments, further comments by the council?
I just wanted to go over the, the, the questions and just my, my perspective on, on the questions that, that I'd give. And this is just my opinion. It's not a council vote, but it just, you know, the, the one A acceptable little condition. You know, to me, I'm, I'm feeling if we're, we're going to be at sixty eight and we want to maintain it at sixty eight on a, on a period of time, that, that seems to be an effective target. Decision process prioritized streets by functional class. I would defer that to the, the staff to that. Because, you know, we're all driving, you know, we drive on one, one class to get out to the main artery and then we drive on the main artery. So I would defer that to staff as to the best, best approach on that. Additional funding, everybody wants additional funding. And in the, in the event of additional funding, I think it, I'd go back to council member Bobby's comment about the council priority of five million annual budget is what I feel is important to do that. In compliance with regulations as push, associated. Regulations are, are important for us to pursue from the standpoint of being able to maintain state laws and state and federal laws. So I, I feel that we have to be able to manage to that. And then confirm the city council support to consult the study to update the vehicle impact fees. You know, I would, I would come back to the electric vehicle aspect of it. You know, electric vehicles aren't paying for gas. So there's, there's a consideration of electrical vehicles on those. That's all. Thank you.
Sergio, would you like to make some comments at this time?
I, I would. Thank you. So for, first, Amy and, and Todd and all the staff, thank you so much for a very comprehensive report that really answered most of my questions. I'm, I'm going to roughly go down the list of, of questions, although not exactly, especially for the two parts of, of number one. Just because I think there's further data and staff analysis that would be required for me to be able to make an informed decision. But I'll say that in, in, in short, I don't know the precise balance of this. But I think a combination of prioritizing streets by functional class and condition would, would be best. My preference at this point is to give the highest priority to our, our residential streets and, and I'm thinking of the, I'm sorry, I don't have the, I, 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 I think it was Hack where the, the pizza party was, was thrown. I, I just think if we can really show our, our residents, the, these streets that because they're not main arterials, may not get as much love, but still have very significant impacts to people's pocketbooks. If, if there's potholes or other wear and tear that they're getting. I, I would have that be my first priority and I think that's going to get, that's going to really lift up the, the average by getting some of those lower ranked streets. But then also a combination, I think we have to balance that with safety considerations for some of the more well-traffic streets. And so I would roughly probably be comfortable with a, a lower average number for, for those main arterials and, and, and the ones that get a lot of folks from outside of Campbell driving through to get on the highway. And, and probably a little bit of a higher average one for, for those smaller residential streets. It has to be balanced with, with safety considerations. And, and so that, that I, I can sit here and, and tell you what, what the number should be, but I think some kind of balance, but really focusing. First and foremost, you know, and like I said, absent other considerations, which might mitigate this but I'm serving our, our residents of the CD impact of their tax dollars. Also wanted to put on table something where I, I wish I had a little bit more information, but just for, for us to be aware of. VTA is currently pulling for a, a revenue measure, which would, would essentially be, be replacing one of the existing sales tax measures. But what's, what's under consideration, part of what the pulling will tell us is the, the, the timing, which would most likely be either twenty twenty six and twenty, or, or twenty twenty eight. But, but the precise state is up near, and I think as part of that, there will need to be discussions at the local level for what, what kind of funding would, would be attractive and, and what kind of projects would it support at the local level? And, and so, you know, I expect Campbell to, for obvious reasons, have a strong voice in, in those discussions. It's just something to, to be aware of now. And, and I, I, I know staff is in touch with VTA, but I'll, I'll certainly do my part to, to, to connect us there. I, I do think it makes sense to prioritize, or, or I'm sorry, it makes sense to start to split out the accessibility issue from others. That's one where I think we've run into trouble, not necessarily with, with streets, although I, you know, I can, I can think of, of some cases there where there's liability concerns and where to me, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to have that competing with our other public works dollars. And, and I, I think, and you're asking really good questions about how things get prioritized and, and the direction that council has set that I think are very appropriate to ask. And I think part of getting us some more informed decisions and probably clear direction for staff would be to start to let that up. So I, I would really be in favor of, of looking at that. Really appreciate the discussions around vehicle impact fees and I'm supportive of coming back with more information. I, I do want to put out that one of the impacts that we see with EVs is that batteries get, get much, much heavier just because of the density of energy required compared to gasoline. And, and so, so I, I don't have Campbell specific numbers, but I know for road, roads in California generally, some of the biggest impact now is that EVs are getting larger and larger. I don't think something that's anticipated when they start coming out of the market, but these giant trucks or SUVs that, that are electric. By, by some metrics proportionate, you know, proportionally is, that's the biggest wear and tear on your streets and we're, we're certainly not taxing that in, in a way that reflects, essentially we're subsidizing tho- those huge cyber trucks that, that we see running around compared to other streets, either smaller EVs or gasoline cars. Because the, there's a, the damage that they cause to streets doesn't rise linearly. There's a, it, it rises higher than, than linearly. So anyway, I don't, again, I don't have the answers to that on where we should fall, but that EV discussion is something I would support coming back. And there's other considerations, because obviously encouraging electric car usage is a good thing. But we also have to be realistic about the, the wear and tear and I don't think that's a discussion that cities have, have been having. I also think we should look at when we, I support coming back with more information when we do. I'd want to look at a, a table listing where other cities throughout the county and region follow what their scores are. And then also what, what they, what they spend to get that number. And I think if you look at any individual city, you're not going to get an apples to apples comparison of Campbell. But I think by looking at, at a table with a good comparison point, I, I think that would really get us to making an informed decision. I'll also just mention recently at an air district meeting, our annual retreat, we heard from a, a company that is going to market with carbon negative pavement. That actually, right now, it's a significant source of, of embodied carbon in the environment. And this would actually remove carbon and it's a very innovative approach. And while I'm not suggesting we replace all our roads with it, I, I do think that, that Ali, it's questions. There may, there, there may be some really good funding for, for a pilot from some of our, our others in the region or something like that. So I don't have the name right now, but I'd be happy to connect staff with that company if that's something to explore in, in the future. Look at a demonstration or a portion for that. But i- in general, I really, I, I think this is a great discussion to have. I support coming back with more information. Not, not just for me, not just on the vehicle impact fees, but whether it's broken up into different items. But coming back with other informational sessions or study sessions, I, I think this is a great approach. And we're off to a good start, but there's just a lot more information I'd, I'd, I'd want to see. But thank you again to staff and colleagues for a really great discussion.
Thank you.
Sorry, I know we're super, super short on time, so I'll just spit out. I, I noticed on the map there were just only, it looked like a handful, maybe three streets, maybe a couple more that were in the failed condition. And so I was curious if any of those are at the top of your mind, if you could say them real quickly. Or I can of course get this answer later, but I think the public would definitely like to know which those particular streets are. And if there's a way we can maybe look it up online anywhere, is there a map for the public to take a look at?
And I know we're almost out of time here, but let me just make a brief couple of comments. First of all, my preference would be to address those streets primarily first by their condition. So the poorer streets first. We had a recent council session where we talked about the importance of addressing some of the real basic needs that residents have and how they measure our progress and our ability to be effective in spending taxpayer money. And I, I think a condition of the streets is certainly one of them. The other point I'd like to make is I, I do want to include in all of this to the best that we can the problem with uplifts in the sidewalks. As someone who's taken many falls on the sidewalks because of the uplifts, I can appreciate the, the trauma of falling unexpectedly. And so I hope we can address that. I, I think the comment earlier about continuing to work with our staff and arborists with respect to trees whose roots grow down. And I've been to some of the tree planting events that the city has sponsored. And I know at that time, it was pointed out that the way that we plant the trees and the, how we cut the roots are such that we purposefully kind of direct that the roots do grow down. I'm sure it's not always possible to control that completely, but it might mean that we need to take a look at the the basic policy of, of the, the, the parking strips and what we will allow to be parked there. I've always been concerned, it's, it's a little bit off topic, but I've always been a little concerned that when trees die and so on. Residents who are technically responsible are never really held accountable to make any corrections there. I think the very least we can do, if we can't fix an uplift right away, the idea of marking them as we have done in the past, I think is important. I do agree that I think we should go ahead and conduct a study. And I suggest that we also consider bringing this whole subject back as part of our budget studies and, and see what levels of priorities we can give to funding and improving this. But again, I wanted to thank you and members of the staff for your report and for certainly bringing this to our attention so that we could focus on it more.
Vice Mayor, I'd also like to weigh in on the questions if I could. I know, I know we're out of time, but I'll be brief. I do think that the pavement, the target should be the sixty eight or the fair for, for the pavement condition. And as far as the funding, I would really like to see staff getting back to that target of five million, at least five million for, for pavement management to keep us at the fair condition. That I would defer the decision-making process to staff. It's my understanding that a lot goes into the prior, priorities, prioritization of the streets. And it's not necessarily ones that are failing, but it's kind of, there's, there's a formula and a process. And it, it would, might seem logical that, oh, we, you would want to take care of a, a failed street as opposed to one that's in, in fair condition. But I, I understand that, that it's not, that's not the case. So I would defer that process to the staff with your expertise, because I certainly wouldn't say, let's, let's pave this one as opposed to that one. And then I would also support the study to regarding the vehicle impact fees to see if we can increase some revenue there. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the council. So we will now conclude the study session portion of the meeting and take just a five-minute break here to allow persons to enter or exit the room and begin at ten after seven with the regular council portion of the meeting.